All right. Here ye, here ye, Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Howard Shipley presiding. Please remain standing.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the very, uh, the March 24th, 2022, a Hamlin County legislative body. And at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Bobby Holland to lead us in our prayer, please.
Let's pray. Dear my Father, God, we beseech you now to be amongst us, to guide our thoughts, to guide our actions, and to let us rely and remember what Paul said in Romans, that loving one another is a law. John said, quoting Jesus Christ, that it's a command. Something we need to take serious and try to find that love for each other, no matter what our differences are. We ask God that you be with those who are ill, fighting sickness. Uh, we especially invoke Howard's son. It's very good to have Joe back with us. And those others that are feeling any kind of pressure or illness, we ask God that you just be with them and bring them and rally them back to health. We ask these things, Father, in your blessed name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Commissioner God, would you lead us in our prayers?
This is salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to, I'd like to get everybody to stop a hat on, Mr. Porter. We'll remove our hats, please. Okay. We have a point of order, uh, asking and requesting that if you have a hat on, that you please remove it at this time. Thank you. Uh, Commissioners, if you have not already done so, please turn your mics on, and we'll do the roll call at this time, please. Okay. We do have a form present, so we are open for business. We have no recognitions at this time, but I want to, uh, take the opportunity at this time to ask Mr. Tony Pettit, our construction manager, to come to the podium to answer, uh, some questions that was asked during our committee meeting regarding the piles. Mr. Pettit.
Um, so I was requested at the committee meeting to go ask the questions of the designers. And this is the question I ask. Um, why the additional eight inches of thickened concrete were not included originally? Or what changed that added the additional eight inches of concrete? So this is the response, and then we're going to, I want to read the response, and then I'm going to have to expound on that, I guess, if you have questions. You understand this, you're doing great. So, the question is behind pending change order number nine, which is part of your, uh, change order. It's field, uh, change, that's a drawing change, number three, was a result of a response to an RFI number three, which is a request for information from the contractor dated 1/7/2022. Responded to on 1/18/2022. The drawings associated with the PCO, pending change order, were up, were updated as part and issued as field change 003 on 1/24/2022, in response to the RFI. There was a con, here's the answer. There was a conflict noted in RFI between the GeoServices drawings and Mosley structural drawings relative to the micropile embedment depths. Embedment depths is referring to the embedment depths into the foundations. Upon review and response to RFI questions, it was determined that minimum embedment should be six inches, as noted on the GeoServices drawings, which affected the clear cover for bottom mat of reinforcing steel. Mosley drawings showed three inches of embedment GeoServices was asked if three inches would work, but they responded, "Micropile embedment needed to be six inches minimum, plus three inches, plus or minus, to the bottom of the compression plate, and could not be changed to match the three inches."
So basically, what I'm hearing you say is there's a conflict over there between...
Between the GeoServices...
And they could not have worked that out prior to, so we would have known.
It was, nobody caught it. So...
But how does that become our problem at this point?
So, you're in a competitive bid. I have no good answer, but here's the answer. I have, you're in a competitive bid, the GeoServices guys have got the, uh, drawings on the micropiles, and they got the design. The concrete contractor, which is the most cost, if you reviewed the change order, the most of the cost is in that concrete contractor. He's looking at the Mosley drawings, which only shows a certain depth on those foundations. Now, there was a, we just didn't hap, hap- happily say, okay, we like this, or we gotta do this. We've been through about four or five different Zoom meetings. We've had, uh, GeoServices on, onsite. We've had the, uh, structural engineer clutched into the Zoom meetings, trying to see if there was a better way of doing that. And the answer was this, we have to do this. So, um, they bid competitively off one drawing, and they did not, the drawing shows a certain depth, not the additional eight inches.
My question, our competitive bidding for us is over.
Well, yeah, but that's when, that's when the issue, uh, it didn't get caught in. That's when, when they did it, they didn't have the conflict noted, but we didn't know there was a conflict there, till they asked the question.
And, and the, these fellows are, this, these companies have built jails before, correct?
Yes.
And it's not been caught?
Each design is unique.
Well, you know, it's just like their mistake not catching, whatever, cost us a hu, uh, whatever.
A hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Yes, a hundred and nine.
Yeah.
So...
It looks like it's Mosley's fault, you know, and they should bear some responsibility, uh, for not having to correct to begin with.
There, there is a conflict in Mosley's drawings.
And Mosley's done these before, and there's a conflict. There's a bit, is there, oh, my question is, is there a conflict in every jail that he builds like this?
I don't know.
Because it seems like he built a lot of jails, he should know this by now.
Yeah. Okay. Still not trying to defend Mosley.
I understand.
But, there, each foundation site, each site is unique, basically from the cells down. Okay? So, from, from the jail cells itself, the first floor slab below, it's kind of a unique situation.
But, but it shouldn't be. Every, every jail in, in Tennessee, or the United States, whatever, the site should be the same, from my understanding. I mean, if it take, i- if it takes 12 inches here, it should take 12 inches here, or if it's eight, but it shouldn't be, say, well, we're, it takes eight, and when now we're going to do 12, then we'll charge you extra. You know what I'm saying?
If I could, one question real quick. When we got this initial bid, and it was so high, it was, it came back to us that costs had been cut, and part of that was cutting part of the cost to the micropiles. Is this a result of those cuts?
No, but the micropiles during that issue did get redesigned. They were, there are a whole lot less micropiles in the job now.
But is that why we have to have stronger micropiles?
The cost, the cost is not in the micropiles, the cost is in the foundation.
I understand, but is that a result of having fewer micropiles?
I can't answer you that question.
How was this caught? I mean, we're good to go, and then, then they catch it, and...
There was a question asked about, well, here's the question. We were, constructability rise, they were trying to pour the thickened part of that mat foundation separately from the mat slab itself. In other words, they're going, eventually you'll be able to walk out there, and you'll see a waffle...
Right.
On this mat slab. And that each depression is where this extra embedment came into play. They were trying, the, our, the contractor was asking if they could somehow pour the thickened part and not pour the mat. And they had two meetings, one beginning back in December, on that issue. And during those meetings, it came up that the embedment needed to be eight inches.
It's, it's, I mean, I know we've got the 2% contingency in there, but trying to, I'd like not to use that if we can. But the thing of it is, it's like they should have known all that prior to. I, I mean, when I build a house, I know exactly what I need, you know?
Mr. Pettit, is this something, who, I'm sorry, did I jump in front of somebody?
You go ahead, I don't want to interrupt you.
Mr. Pettit, is this some, I mean, you're our project manager, and, and you're watching over this. Is this something we can expect? I mean, I, I agree with these gentlemen, that this, that the core drilling, everything, maybe this should have been known upfront. And, and I agree with these gentlemen also, that, that maybe we shouldn't brunt all the cost of this. Um, you know, is that, is that the way it shakes down? You're our, you're our guy. Tell us, tell us what you think.
Well, yeah, I wish it had been caught. I understand how it was not caught. There is a thing called, and I'm going to use a legal term, and I'm not a legal guy, unjust enrichment that gets, it's, it's, if it was there, we'd have paid for it.
But my question, my, my question is, how many more unjust enrichments are we going to have?
I've got a, I've got something I call pits, which is project tracking issues. And some of these go away, some of these are resolved without money, but we're going to find a couple more. One that I know of right now is the edge of slab versus the precast. I haven't got those cost in, but that, that's one that is drawn incorrectly. And, uh, or not, when the details of, you have certain tolerances in the precast institute's standards, certain tolerances in the steel erection standards, and the two together, you have to have a way of getting your precast bypassing your steel. It's complicated, but that's coming. You're going to hear me in the next committee meeting, presenting another change order, but these are from things that are unknowns, like sanitary sewer and stuff like that.
I understand something, I understand some of the unknown, but now you're saying, what you're saying is, here's one coming up, it's going to, so, okay, guys, you all going to have to vote for this again, because we're going to need it. We need the money, for whatever it is, contingency for...
Yeah, it was, I mean, eventually, you can ask that...
But the thing of it is, these things should be known.
Should have been coordinated, yes.
Should have been coordinated.
That's correct.
Right hand's not talking to the left hand, and we're early in the ballgame.
Yeah, and, yeah, this, this is a, um, I, I, every time I get on the phone, but, uh, when we start turning around, going the other way, things will get better, I hope.
Uh, is Geotech, have they finished all their cold, their drilling?
Uh, Geotech did the soil exploration.
Right.
Okay. So off those soil explorations, they made recommendations to the structural engineer. They also designed the micropiles. That's been sent to the engineers, structural engineers. That's completed.
That's all set up?
There are micropiles being installed right now. They're, uh, are just now getting started on them.
So you don't anticipate any more Geotech coming back, so you got to add more micropiles to it?
Uh, no, they, there may be, uh, there is some micropiles out there that's got, they're, right now, they're having an issue with grout. So, your bid documents, our bid documents have, you have a five and a quarter, or seven and a half inch micropile, which is a steel shaft. If you go out there and look through the fence, you'll see them out there drilling those things. Then they fill them with grout. In our bid, we've included 150% of the, um, theoretical volume of the pipe for grout. They're having some issues right now, and the architect and the contractor are trying to resolve that, but they're having issues where that volume of grout is going over. We have a unit price in our bid documents that we pay for anything over 150% of theoretical volume. And they've had a couple that went 300 and 350,000. That's coming too, but we're trying to resolve that. We had a meeting, day before yesterday, meeting today on that, and still trying to use another thought up. So, some, to answer your question, Commissioner May Smith, we're not out of the micropile Geo, technical stuff yet.
Or could still come up with a change notice?
Yeah.
Do, do we have any recourse on this, or we just, this is what you're handing us, and, or they are handing us? Do we have recourse? Do we have anything we can...
Well, uh, I, I can't tell you that. I can't tell you if you got recourse. I can tell you that it's not going to be very successful because of that term I said, unjust enrichment. Uh, it can be some, it, I know, I would start it out as a negotiation with the designers and, and see what they can do there with that. So, um, this is, um, it's unfortunate, and, and we're going to hit it a couple more times. The only one I know of right now is it, is the, uh, is the, is the steel right against the precast, so...
Anybody else have questions that they want to ask Tony at this time?
There, there was some savings in, in some other things, weren't there?
Yeah, that, we, 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 uh, we were able to meet with the Geotech guys and eliminate the soil cement, uh, but on the upper level. And mainly that was because you have that, um, soil nail wall, and by the time you put that soil nail wall in, you lay back for the, the other retaining walls, you didn't have any soil cement left. So that saved, that's in the document, is that $80,000 or $100,000 there as a savings. And then we also picked up some savings by changing the brick selection. So, that was in that first change.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
If you have any other questions, let me know. Some of the questions, you're not going to like the answers, and I apologize.
Thank you very much. Item number two, nominations and appointments. You have before you a list of individuals that the mayor is recommending that, uh, we confirm his appointments to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Uh, on that list, we have Will Slegar, Philip Carlisle, Jerry Horner, Ed Hale, John Allen, Jeff Wilder, Max Cook. The chair would entertain a motion as to whether we, uh, confirm his appointments or not.
So move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, Mr. Doty. Uh, all of those in favor of confirming these appointments? Oh, sorry, Mr. McNeese Smith, you're recognized.
Can you tell me how many times they, they've met, the construction people have met through planning?
I can tell.
Anyone planning know that?
Do you know?
I think, last year, they met twice.
They met twice last year, Wayne.
Last last year.
Yes.
I think, but I believe that was the last.
All right. Anybody else? Those in favor of confirming these appointments, let it, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the mo, uh, the motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Step of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 3A, approval of consent calendar items. I'll put that in form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent, uh, calendar items. Do we have a, we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3A, 14 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 3B, approval of regular calendar items. We would go back then and delete 2B, the Minority Committee, uh, Special Service Board, and also add on Finance Committee, uh, 6F, approval to allow new owners of boat dock to develop and expand the parking area along the road. I'll put that in form of motion, Chairman.
You have a motion? There is a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
3B, 14 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
I'll have, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Step. At this time, the chair would recognize, uh, a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Doty moves that we approve the consent calendar. Mr. Horner seconds the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 4A, 14 yeas, 0 nae.
The motion is approved. At this time, we would, uh, entertain public comments from the audience regarding items that are on the agenda. We do have a request at this time from Linda Noe to speak, uh, uh, regarding items 6A, B, G, and D. Mrs. Noe, you're recognized. And she has five minutes, by the way.
Mr. Shipley? 6A, B, C, and D are all in the Finance Committee, and I'll just go in order. 6A is monthly check approval. I wonder how many of you are aware that you are approving checks that have already been printed, cut, signed, and mailed out? This check approval is nothing more than a useless gesture, of which unfortunately there are a number. But let's look at some specific checks. As all of you know by now, the county attorney is paid a set fee of $100 a month as a salary to attend Finance Committee and Commission meetings. If anyone doubts that, let me know, and I'll provide you the information, or you can ask, well, the mayor's not here today, but Ms. Hurst has confirmed that. In 6A on the agenda, you are approving checks that have been written to the county attorney for his hourly billings to the county, not the $100 per month. It's a salary, it's in another item. Do you know whether the attorney, the attorney is also billing you by the hour for attending Finance Committee meetings? Do you know whether he is also billing you by the hour for attending this meeting? Those are two very important questions that any commissioner who is responsible for county dollars should know. Am I paying someone twice for one service? In fact, do you think the county attorney or anyone should be paid twice for the same service, whether it is attending meetings or removing a tree stump? That is why I asked you at the last meeting to find out whether the county attorney is billing by the hour to attend meetings that he's already paid $100 every month, like clockwork, to attend. If you don't ask, you don't know. And if you don't know, you may be approving a double payment to the county attorney for attending those two meetings. And unfortunately, that would make you somewhat complicit in paying somebody a second time with county tax dollars for a job that they've already been paid for. So I encourage you to find out whether you are in fact paying twice. The Justice Center, the Mosley contract, or the Mosley change order. I'd already marked down some of the items that Mr. Pettit has mentioned. I want you to look at your, if you get a chance, and I know you can, whether you do or don't, but he referred to proposed change orders, and he mentioned one through nine at the last meeting. The only ones on this one are PCO 1, 4, and 9. I think he's asked, answered part of my question. There are all these other change orders that are sitting there, ready to be dumped on you and on the taxpayers. I would recommend, for whatever it's worth, that you accept proposed change order 1 and 4, the two credits, and that you reject number 9 until you get more information. And I have in mind exactly some of the things you need to know, but I won't waste my time here going into those. But I think there are issues regarding the drawings that could be looked at and possibly answer whether you in fact owe the 109,000, or whether it's right for them to request that 109,000 or not. So you don't have to approve that change order as a lump. You can approve two parts of it, get a committee, building and grounds, whatever, and look at whether number, proposed, proposed change order 9 is justified or not. The next item, I'm going to skip 9C and go to 9D. I think you have received something that said you have a contract in front of you for Summers and Taylor. Unless the mayor gave you something more than I have seen, you have a bid proposal, and there are items in that bid proposal, and it's not a contract, and you haven't had the contract for 10 days, but items in the bid proposal that are illegal.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? We have three minutes.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I went through some of the county billings for the attorney today, and my question for you folks are, are you good stewards? Do you watch the taxpayers' money that you are spending? Because you're not spending your money, you're spending ours. Now, some of you have been extremely good stewards, and I'll say thank you upfront. In 2018, I filed lawsuit against the county attorney for double billing. And as I went back over these bills, I could not tell if he was still charging to attend hourly the commission and the finance meetings. His billing needs to be a little clearer. If I didn't do no better than that on itemizing my taxpayer, customers' accounts, they wouldn't be happy with me, okay? Again, you just need to be more conservative. He receives $100 a month to attend the meetings. I don't get paid twice for the same tax return. Do you just get paid twice for the same job? If you do, please let me know what it is, I'll jump in and go with you. Because I love the aspect of cheating somebody that much. And that is what it is. It's cheating, stealing, fraud, however you want to describe it. And again, you folks are supposed to be good stewards. So are you asking the question? Are you looking at the billing? Do you question any of it? I've never heard one of you, the whole time I've been here, especially my representative, question those bills. All I've seen is vote, yeah, 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 yeah. You just need to start saying no. You just need to start questioning. If that was your money you were spending and not ours, I'd think you'd be a little more particular. Now, I gave each and every one of you a copy of that lawsuit, with the exception of Mr. DeBoer, and I emailed him his, so that I know every one of you have a copy of exactly what I'm talking about tonight. And just so you know, other than that man right there and Mr. Neese Smith, not one of you sent me a question. Not one of you asked anything. What are you doing? Are you being good stewards? Election's not that far away. Are you being a good steward? For some of you, I can be happy to answer the question. For some of you... For some of you, I am so proud of you, just stay in or hang in or do what's right, I am proud of you, and hope to God they put you folks back in that have stood repeatedly when it came to the referendum votes, that stood repeatedly when it came to the $103 million. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I got that wrong. He just corrected me a few minutes ago, I think he said another 109 million on top of that. What are you doing? Wake up, please.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Chairman, I recommend, Chairman.
Please.
You need to remove his hat.
Is that in the rules? I didn't, I didn't see that in the rules.
This is a court, yeah.
This is not a court.
It's, it's a court.
Yeah, there's also, it says no photography in here, and photography is allowed. This is not a court, this is used for a public meeting.
Oh, you need to remove your hat, no matter what.
Tim, he has no respect for anyone on this panel, so let's not make an issue out of it. The issue can come up later on in a court of law, okay? Thank you.
I look forward to that.
We have three minutes.
So, since you bring up respect, you all know that government property cannot be altered, cannot be destroyed, and cannot be built without it going through these commissioners. Friday, I was here looking at records. I noticed two tri, this has to do with the Hill House, it has to do with the Hill House. It has to do with the Hill House.
The parking lot at the Hill House?
It has to do with the Hill House, yes.
The parking lot?
The, the, the parking lot as well, yes.
Okay, as long as it deals with the parking lot.
So, you all spoke about getting bids for the parking lot, but there has been a building that was destroyed there last week by the maintenance company that was not discussed here at the meeting. So you all are the ones that are authorized to demolish any kind of government object, no matter how simplified it is. It goes through you. So I'm curious to know, how come we didn't talk about knocking that building down? We spoke about a different building, but never a word in regards to that building. I'd like to know who authorized the maintenance crew to demolish and get rid of that building. Second, I'll take that up the next time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Good evening, I'm Chris Black, 7335 Evelyn Circle, Talbot in the 13th District. Tonight, I'll be addressing item 6C. Today, I stand before this body to bring in a matter of extraordinary importance to your attention relative to Resolution 22-07. If adopted, this measure will further saddle Hambling County taxpayers with the responsibility of assuming public debt in the millions. A municipal bond is a debt security issued by, in our case, the county to finance its capital expenditures. They can be thought of as loans that investors make to local governments. General obligation bonds are municipal bonds that provide ways for state and local governments to raise money for projects that may not generate a revenue stream directly. They're called general obligation because they aren't backed by a specific revenue-producing project or asset. Instead, they're backed by the full faith and credit of the issuer. In essence, this means that bonds are backed by state and local governments' ability to tax and to raise taxes, and if necessary, to pay bondholders. For local governments, this normally comes in the form of property taxes. But wait, didn't Mayor Britton and County Commission say that they have no intent of raising our taxes? If you're thinking that something sounds a little bit fishy here, you're absolutely right. According to Claire Gorham Cohen in an article titled "Analyzing Government Credit", local governments have always been dependent upon property taxes to finance their operations. As is customary with general obligation bonds, this county government establishes language providing for the levy of a tax for the payment of principal, premium, and interest thereon. The resolution further states that the bond shall be payable from unlimited taxes to be levied on all taxable property in this county. For the prompt payment of the principal, premium, and interest on the bonds, the full faith and credit of the county are irrevocably pledged. Last October, Britton said in a presentation to this commission that he made it clear that financing for any additional project will require additional revenue. As we know, this government is slated to begin numerous projects within the next few years. Whereas these projects will consume the county's debt capacity until 2034, it is evident that some type of tax increase is on the horizon. Rather than whether the political ramifications of a tax increase before the general election, it is evident that Mayor Britton and this Republican-led county commission would rather kick the proverbial can down the road by issuing general obligation bonds in the immediate term, followed by a property tax increase post-election. Using municipal bonds as a means of cushioning the financial situation that this county finds itself in is akin to using a boulder as a cushion when you fall. By assuming additional debt, county government is saddling your family, your neighbors, as well as future generations, with the responsibility of standing good for its spending. When final bond payments are due, I will be dead and in the ground, Mayor Britton will be dead and in the ground, and so will you on this commission. Ultimately, you are charging future generations that will bear the brunt of the decisions made tonight. According to tables provided by the State Comptroller's Office, gross public debt will exceed 98 million with this bond resolution's passage. Is this really the best that our allegedly conservative government can muster? I would hope not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Regarding any items that are on the agenda. If not then, we will proceed with our business and close public comments. Chairman Randy DeBoer of the Finance Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item 6A, the approval of the monthly checks, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you are recognized.
How long have we been approving the monthly checks after they've already been paid? How long's that been going on?
30 years.
That seems odd to me, approve it after they've been paid. What's your recourse after they've been paid? You don't have one, do you?
Is that the wife?
And the next question, who checks the invoices when they come in? If, if, if they're, like, these people talk about double charging, who does that?
We have a count payable clerk who, uh...
Count.
First, when the bill comes in, it goes to the department head, and the department head signs off that they've received the product or the service, and they sign off an okay payment. And then, and then the payables clerk.
Is that Jeff or, or Duane Fox? Which one is it?
Rachel Callison is our payable clerk.
Who?
Rachel Callison.
Rachel Callison. So she's seen no immorality as the way it's been done, if they've been double charging or not?
No, she checks, we have a purchase order process, and, and first, the department head has to, to get the quotes if it's over $1,000, or do the bid if it's over $10,000, and then a purchase order is issued. And at the purchase order process, that's when it's checked to see that there's enough money in the line item to pay for, to pay for the product, okay? And then the order is made, and then when the product or service comes in or is completed, and we get an invoice, then the department head okays it, and then it's paid by the payables clerk.
So if, if they're double bid, it will be caught?
Sure. We've done that before, yeah.
Anyone else who wishes to address the motion? If not, then let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas, 1 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6B, Justice Center Change Order, number 1, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There is a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion then, I assume that we are ready to vote the motion? Let's vote the motion.
11 yeas, 3 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 6C, Resolution 2207, Hamley County, 2022, Bond Resolution, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, there is a second. Any discussion?
Is that, is that the, which bond is that?
That's the $50 million.
That's the one I'd like to make a recommendation, we make that to 72 million.
We have a recommendation, a modification of the bond to 72 million.
All right, we have a, a motion to amend the original motion, changing the 50 million to, uh, 72 million. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have, did you get the second? We have a second. Commissioner Doty, uh, no, Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
This, uh, this increase, this is first I've heard of an increase. What, what's this increase for, from 50, 50 to 72?
I'm not, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think what this is about, Wayne, is the Fed announced that there would be probable seven increases to the interest rate this year from them, and interest rates are expected to go up because of that. All of the business cycles are saying that they expect it to go up.
It's already started.
It's, it has, but they're expecting it to go up astronomically, actually with seven increases, and we're just, myself, I would have to get ahead.
We need to get the biggest bang for our bucks that we can.
Get ahead, that way we're not paying as much, a higher interest rate. If we wait months down the road to do another bond issued for this extra, chances are we're gonna be paying a much higher interest rate.
Okay, Thomas, let me ask you, uh, are we gonna take this money now, or are we gonna wait until it goes back up again before we take any of it?
We'd have to take it now when we do this bond resolution. We'd have it in our accounts that we could use to pay out with at a lower interest rate.
So this 72, we, we got it for 50, so we got 72, we got 22.
22.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Bessler from Cumberland Securities is here, he can address a lot of these questions, but...
Okay, Mr. Kershaw, is it okay for you to hold your comments until Mr.?
Yes, I was, I was gonna actually address Mr. Bessler, so I'll wait.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chris Bessler, Cumberland Securities, Knoxville, Tennessee. As I understand, what the proposed amendment is, is taking what was already scheduled to be issued, so the previous schedule that was already presented in front of commission last October was to issue the bonds that were issued back in December, come in this summer, issue 50 million for the Justice Center, in the fall, do 22 million for the elementary school, and then in early 2023, to come back and finish up the remaining 25.4 million for the Justice Center. So all in all, that's a total of 97.4 million. The reason it was spread out was to go ahead and take the money as you were gonna be spending it and not go into debt for money that you didn't need to spend too early. Now, with the economy, the change in rates, as everybody has spoken about, the question started coming up at the committee meeting a couple, early last week, should, should the county consider combining the issues, going ahead and moving up the, the fall issue, or even, even look at the spring issue from next year, the final 25 million, and do it all at one time? And so this would just move up the September issue for the school system. It would still leave the other 25.4 million out there for early next year. The commission really would need to make the decision on whether or not to just do only 50 million right now and stick with doing 22 million in the fall and 25 million in the spring, and take whatever the interest rate risk is at that time. If rates go up, then you just pay a higher rate. And looking over the numbers, though, I can tell you that if, if rates move up more than about 40 basis points, one basis point, just to speak in normal terms, one basis point is .01 percent, okay? So .01 percent is what's considered one basis point. If, if interest rates move up on average more than 40 basis points or so, then you would have been better off to go ahead and issue all of it right now compared to waiting all the way through next spring.
When you say all of it, do you mean the 72 or the entire?
No.
All of it.
So, for instance, if rates, if you had a rate movement from, say, 3.5% to 4%, then you would look back on it and say, we should, we should have...
So if, if we were to move forward right now with this 72 million, realizing that the Fed, I understand, is looking at 25.25% increments raising, as Thomas said, throughout the year, if we only did the 72 now, what if in early fall, we looked at the rest of it to see where we're at? I mean, it maybe only rise another quarter percent.
Right, we can't predict where it's gonna go. So one of the thing, I mean, this is, it's basically a matter of risk tolerance, okay? It's a matter of risk tolerance, because we don't know where rates are gonna go in six months and nine months. You know where rates are now, they're around pretty, you know, it's not as low as it was the last couple of years, but from a historic basis, if you're locking in your debt at around 3.25%, that's a pretty good rate historically. So you have that burden hand on your risk, and you, and you take that off. Now, what do you give up for that risk removal? You get, what you have to give up for that is that you're paying interest on, on money you're not spending down yet.
And you feel that what we're gonna be paying with it just sitting there is more valid than waiting for a higher interest rate?
I'm sorry, could you...
Well, i-if we take the money now, or, or the issue the bonds now, the interest rate we pay today will overcome paying a higher, higher interest rate later.
Right, if, if rates go up by 40 basis points, then you would come out ahead by doing it all now compared to waiting.
And if you look, Chris, at, at the, uh, what's happening in the world, and what's happening with the interest rates and stuff like that that started moving up a little bit, it scares me to think that we're gonna wait and borrow this money later when the interest rates go up. If we borrowed the whole thing right now, we know, we know what we have to pay, we know what we got. Now, if it was up or down later, doubt very seriously it's gonna go back down with, with the way the world's feeling, but, but I think we're, we'd be smart to do that. And Bill? I'm sorry. If we borrowed the whole kit and caboodle right now, could we afford that?
Yes, we've got the revenue stream.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
This, uh, this 22 million, that goes for the schools. Does this school project still a go? That building over on Martin Luther Boulevard?
They've already, they've already bid the earthwork.
I saw that.
It's going on and, and starting any time, and I contacted Dr. Perry today, and he said they're moving forward with the plans and to bid the project this spring.
Okay, what about before they were gonna have an exit that would go up beside Roger Trenton, come out on Sulphur Springs, but that's been fixed as emergency use only? What about the, the way that people are gonna get out of the school now? They still gonna have to come down and, on, on the main road, or some...
I think now, there's still some work that needs to be done between the city and the school system on that exit on Sulphur Springs. I don't know that they can limit traffic on a public street like that, so that's, that's an issue that has to be negotiated between the city and the school system.
If that's a public street going up that hill, if it is?
It is.
It is.
Mr. Doty, you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question. On these bond issues, is there not a timeframe that we have that we have to use that money by? Mr. Bessler, may I be able to answer it better?
Yeah. There are certain rules and restrictions guiding how quickly you have to spend down the proceeds. Yes, you are correct on that, and part of that depends on also how much interest you're earning on the bond proceeds versus what you're paying on it. And if you are paying less than what you're, I'm sorry, if you are earning less on your bond proceeds than what you are paying to bondholders, there's, it's a little bit more lenient in the way that that works out, and that would be the case here. Generally speaking, you have two years with certain benchmarks that you have to meet from the closing date of the bond issue, based upon the expected spin, spin down for the Justice Jail Center. This should fit right into that.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else who wishes to address the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, could I address the mayor one more time, please?
You can what?
Address the mayor one more time?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, on, on this, if we issue this entire bond issue, we're just bumping up our payment schedule, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but we've already, this has already been entailed in our long-range budget funds, our budget... our budget for repayment, correct?
These numbers, bonds, the 92 million, part of finance plan.
Exactly, all along. Okay.
All right, we have.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman.
We have a, a motion to amend the original motion by changing 50 million to 72 million. That has been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on that amendment? I know there's been some discussion about the whole total amount. You can, if you're going to go in that direction, I think another amendment to the amendment would have to be in order.
Can I just amend my amendment? Can I just amend it? A motion?
Good.
For the whole thing?
You're amending the amendment?
Yeah, for the, for the.
It probably would be better for somebody else to make that amendment.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we amend the First Amendment to include the additional 25.4 million dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Bessler, on that total?
That is correct.
All right, we have.
The total of 97.4 million for bond issue.
Okay, we have an amendment to the amendment to change the 74 million to 97 million?
97.4.
Point four, okay. Is there a second to that amendment to the amendment?
I second.
All right, Mr. Horner seconds the amendment? Any discussion to the amendment to the amendment? If not, then we're going to vote the amendment to the amendment of changing the original amendment from 74 million to 97.4 million. Call the roll, please. This is off the, off the board, so let's call the roll.
Jeff Aker?
No.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Tim Doens?
Aye.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Eileen Arnwien?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Shifley?
Yes.
Jim Stamp?
Yes.
Taylor Ward?
No.
11 yeas, 3 nays.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment has, has passed, and so we're back to, it's getting a little bit hairy for me here, but.
The original motion.
We're going to go back to the original motion, and the original motion has been changed to 97.4 million. Any discussion on the original motion? If not, then this is on the board, and we can, there's no discussion. If you're in favor of the amended original motion, please vote the motion at this time.
11 yeas, 3 nays.
The motion is approved.
Items.
As amended.
Item 6D, the bid tabulation 2022, oh, one to 2022, construction of new parking area. I vote that we set aside the 10-day rule and approve the bid and the contract, and I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to set aside the 10-day rule, approve the bid and the contract. Is there any discussion?
So you're disallowing the 10-day rule, a rule we've got, a 10-day rule on contract?
We're setting it aside.
We're going to set that aside and forget about it.
Your motion is to set it aside.
Okay.
For this particular contract.
Do you have a contract?
Mr. Neesmith?
Do we have a contract with them, a regular contract or just one like it's, it's in my packet of?
It's in that, that's it. That's the bid proposal.
It's a bid proposal.
That is the agreement between us and the contractor.
The bid proposal is a contract?
Look on, look on page two and see if there's not a, there should have been a, a packet that was at your seat which had the whole history with the revision from the, the.
Yeah, I've got it.
Terms and conditions, that's the agreement.
It said bid proposal.
That's the agreement that Summers and Taylor uses, and that's what we'll use as.
Agreement, but not a contract.
It is the contract that we'll use. That'll be the legal document.
Has your attorney looked at it?
Yes, she has.
Ms. Nollie, public comments are over with.
I'm trying to say.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to address the motion? I need to remind you that in order to set aside the 10-day rule, this would require 10 votes. So are you ready to vote the motion? Vote the motion, please.
Item 6D, 11 yeas, 3 nays.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 6DI, number one, demolition of the maintenance building. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, Mr. Neesmith?
Just send it out for bid, Randy? To, to, okay. Have you, has it been checked for asbestos, that old building?
Yes, it was a year ago, and we've already contacted an abatement company.
There's some money going to be in, how much, how much they talk about?
It'll be in that $325,000, $325,000 that we set as a budget for the paving and, and for the demolition and the removal of the.
Anyone else who wishes to address the motion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 61, 12 yeas, 2 nays.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 6E, budget amendments, number one, Hamlin County Board of Education, budget amendment number five, increase of 92,921.44, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 61, 14 yeas, 0 nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 6E2, Fund 101, this is for other facilities and maintenance. It's a HVAC system for Dr., I mean, not Dr., but Judge Boniface, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Mr. Neesmith, thank you.
Study.
Item 6E2, 13 yeas, 1 nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 6E3, Fund 101, other public safety, Homeland Security grant for 22,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Neesmith?
What is this grant, Randy? 22.
Homeland Security grant.
That's the, the annual grant that we apply for from, it's a federal money, Homeland Security through the state of Tennessee. We get about 20 to 22,000 dollars a year, and it's used for purchases for public safety agencies across the county, and we alternate it among the various public safety agencies.
Is it a matching grant?
No. It's 100%.
Free from them. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the motion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6E3, 14 yeas, 0 nays.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F, approval to allow new owners of the boat dock to develop and expand the parking lot, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion? Oh, this is off the board, I'm sorry. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Who made the second?
Mr. Doty.
Oh, thank you. Thomas, Mr. Neesmith, you're recognized.
Will, will they be paying for the removal of that bank that they're going to fix?
It was my understanding that everything was.
The agreement is, the agreement that the development, the agreement is that, that the development or the expansion of the parking lot, doing the, the grant, the earthwork and the gravel will be paid by, by then, yes.
Okay. That parking lot, will they, will they widen the road there so you can park on the left-hand side going down before you get to the parking lot? That will be widened.
Anyone else who wishes to address the motion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman of the Board. At this time, the Chair will recognize Chairman Tim Doens of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. I call the Public Service Committee to order. Anybody wishing to speak?
That's a free grant.
You need to deal with the motion.
Resolution 22 dash 08, resolution to adopt various international codes. I put that into form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 7A, 13 yeas, 1 nays.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The one, we appreciate that. At this time, the Chair will entertain public comments regarding any items that are not on the agenda. We do have two requests for five additional minutes. Mr. Flumgar, Flumeyer, you're recognized at this time.
Todd Frumeyer, 1212, Hodge Drive, Morristown, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On that bond thing, I think you probably made the right call because money-wise, that's okay, but you wouldn't have been in that position if you hadn't screwed up the jail. But to my, to my comments, I want to address the budget and the jail. First, I attended the ambulance authority board meeting yesterday and heard the presentation from Director Danny Housewright to the board. I understand Director Housewright may have met with Mayor Britton today on the future of Morristown Hamblin EMS. I came away from the meeting more convinced by the director of the urgency of the matter than the board was, unfortunately. They're going to have a meeting next Wednesday at noon to follow up. I plan on being there, and I think as many of you as possible ought to be there as well. The state of our EMS is dire, and I believe it's going to require funding from county commission, city council, or both. Bottom, bottom line, the EMTs need to be paid more. The work here is busier and more stressful than in neighboring counties, but the pay is less. The EMS is losing people at an unsustainable rate. I was talking to my wife about this matter and the fact that I was going to speak on this tonight. She's NOBGYN and works with the EMS frequently. I hear from her about the difficulty she has in getting patients transported at the hospital. She praises all the time how the EMTs and the folks responsible for transport go above and beyond the call of duty, but they're stretched too thin. As I understand it, our EMS has 12 open positions right now. The only way we're going to keep from losing more people and to hopefully start filling some of those empty spots is to pay them more. We have the lowest pay in the region for our EMTs. Director Housewright sees this, and he wants to increase their pay. The board yesterday, though, dithered and put the decision off a week. Budget season is coming up, so I want to urge you and the mayor and the city to get together and save our EMS, however it needs to happen. You need to make sure that these men and women get competitive pay. Give them a reason to stay here in Hamblin County. Second, Hamblin County, unfortunately, like a lot of counties in Tennessee, has a cash bail system that ends up trapping poor people in jail because they cannot afford to purchase their release. The judge and judicial commissioners in Hamblin County routinely impose unaffordable cash bail amounts. In a county where one in five residents lives below the poverty level, these money bail amounts are essentially detention orders. Now, I'm sure we're all aware of the state of our jail. The national coverage of the atrocious conditions over there have been a black eye for Hamblin County. How that's brought us, and, you know, that's brought us to this discord over the $100 million jail. I think you can draw a direct line in the jail conditions and the backbreaking debt of this new Justice Center back to our cash bail system, certainly at least. I believe that part of the overcrowding at the Hamblin jail is a direct result of that system, so consider this, please. If your criminal justice system is running the way it should, cash bail would only be one part of the system for how you deal with people accused of crimes. The default should be for those accused of crimes to be released on recognizance because they have local ties or based on other factors. Instead, what do we do? We prop up the bail bond industry and assign bail in all cases. And yes, I said all. In case you didn't know, the Vera Institute of Justice did a study and found that Hamblin County was one of only 25 out of 95 counties in Tennessee that reported zero releases on recognizance in 2019. I think not coincidentally, that February 2020 is when we were sued for our cash bail practices. So I want to look at the implications for the Hamblin County taxpayer because of this. Well, we've got the $100 million Justice Center, which might have been avoided if this problem hadn't been going on for many years. We've got a cash bail system which detains more people than it should and for longer than necessary. That's not free in money or in manpower. Insurance premiums are going to rise, right, because it's the attorneys for the insurance company that represents the county that's representing those Hamblin County officials who have been sued and are embroiled in this so far two-year-long class action lawsuit. And when the defendants lose, which they probably will, there's a good chance Hamblin County could be paying their attorney's fees, or I don't know, maybe it comes from the insurance company. In any case, that's going to impact Hamblin County taxpayers. And I would just suggest for your information, if you're looking for a comparable case, Giles County, Tennessee had a similar case to the one that's been brought against Hamblin County. They lost, and their plaintiff's attorney's fees were in the seven figures. So again, what I would say is budget season is coming up, Commissioners, and I hope that you will take into account this unconstitutional system that we have running in Hamblin County and the costs that it is imposing on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Nollie has also requested five minutes, so you're recognized at this time.
So many things have happened in this meeting that just raise more and more questions. You approved what was called a contract. Just because you call it a contract doesn't make it a contract. And if our attorney did look at that, and I would appreciate it if he would address that, I know the mayor said he looked at it, I would very much like to know that, and I think you should know that, whether this proposal has been reviewed by the attorney. The other thing is the Health Department contract. Remember the one you approved last month, 22420, without setting aside the 10-day rule? Without having a contract in hand? You cannot make this stuff up. We approve contracts we don't even have. And we set aside the 10-day rule on contracts for bid proposals. When are you going to follow your rules? You're worried about a hat. How about being worried about hundreds of thousands of dollars, or as Mr. Frumeyer mentioned, millions of dollars? You sat up here and ignored and wouldn't allow Mr. Neesmith 15 minutes to present a proposal, to look at it, to consider it, that could and probably would have saved as much as 30 million or more. Now you're worried about borrowing money. I'd love to have, have to borrow 30 million less than what you're talking about. I'd love to have, have to borrow $30 million less than what you're talking about. You talk about, again, the Health Department. Unless something has come in the last two days, you still don't have a Health Department contract that you approved in February. And I would still maintain that that vote was invalid, and the mayor has no authority to sign that. And he can do what he wants to do, but we'll see how that comes out. The other item is you mentioned rules. And of course, we were concerned about hats. And I will tell you, Tony, I wish you'd take your hat off. That's my personal preference. But you have refused to follow your own rules, important rules. And you're worried about a hat. How about be worried about $105 million? How about being worried about contracts that you don't even have in hand, but you, ah, let's approve it, whatever it is? You would not do that with your own money. Or if you would, as Ms. Green said, I want to deal with you. Your Rules Committee has not met in a year, over a year. Well, actually, one day less than a year. You need to meet and you need to decide, do you have rules or not? Are you going to follow your rules or not? Or are they just a bunch of pieces of paper? Just, just, when you think of the magnitude of this, just like so many of you voted against a referendum, you don't want to let the people vote, and now you're out passing out cards, putting up signs, asking the people, oh, vote for me. Takes a lot of nerve to tell people, you, I don't care about your vote, except every four years. I'm going to mention just one other thing, the library. And I'm so sorry you have that cough. The library. Did you know that you had three quotes above $10,000 in January for the library? And then miraculously, one of those bidders submitted a revised bid in February that was $9,989. $11 below the bidding threshold. Now, I respect that company. They're an outstanding company. But that is an interesting situation that should be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the Commission on Non- Agenda Items Only? You have three minutes.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. You folks talk about your rules, okay? I was one of, one of the people that you voted to sue because you didn't like my shirt that I had on that night. Then you set aside the 10-day rule that was put there for the protection of the citizens and to help you folks. And you just set it aside like it's nothing. You want to push certain rules, but you don't want to abide by it all. How do you folks that go along with this sleep at night? You're not serving the citizens. You put your signs out, you put your flyers out, you tell people, let me come talk to you, I'll explain to you why I voted that way. I'd love for my commissioner to come explain to me why she voted that way, because I've been here through most of the meetings and I think I know. She didn't listen to Mr. Pettit. She's sitting there too busy flipping through her book. And I'm not criticizing, I just believe you, respect is something that needs to go both ways. Now, some of you folks I highly respect. Some of you I question your ability to earn that respect. I was taught coming up, and I'm older than some of you, I'm younger than some of you. Mr. Huntsman and Mr. Neesmith are a little bit older than I am, and I respect their age. I think Mr. Taylor might be about my age limit. But I was taught that we earn our respect. You folks need to wake up and earn your respect. You need to vote to represent the citizens of Hamblin County, not your buddies, not your friends. You need to take care of the citizens' money. Now, I, for one, consider that my great-grandchildren will be paying for this jail. I was in high hopes that my children would move back here when they retired. But at the rate you're going, the property taxes are going to be so high, I seriously doubt that they can live in Moorestown. And that is a shame and disgrace since they went through Hamblin County Schools, Waldorf State College, and then on to UT. It is a shame that our children have to go outside of Hamblin County to work because things are like they are here. You folks need to wake up. Now, some of you care, and I'm proud of the ones of you that have stood. I can name you, but I'll be good tonight, and I won't do that to the rest of them because it might make them feel bad. But for you that have stood for us, I am so proud of you, and I hope to God they put you in back in because you are desperately needed. Some of the rest of you, I hope to God that you have a landslide loss and people let you know how they feel about you. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission? Yes, sir. Non- Agenda Items Only.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Shipley. Chris Black again. Y'all know my address, I'll tell you if you want me to tell you again, but I want to speak from the heart. And this is hard as heck to do. I've known most of you since I was a kid, all right? And the problem I have today, and I know non- Agenda Items Only, but I've got to say it, $97.4 million, are you kidding me? I am 32 years old, have a little sister who's 17, who lives in Mississippi. I pray to God that one day she'll come to live in Hamblin County because I know what a great community it is. But this hurts. This, this hurts. It really does. You know, without getting too political, and I'm really going to try not to, I was a Republican until about, good Lord, I guess, eight weeks ago. And there's a reason why I can't call myself that anymore. Y'all have made it so dadgum hard to align myself with a party that I love, with people that I love. Commissioner Huntsman, I love that man like a brother, I really do. I can remember going to Republican Party meetings, walking up to him and, you know, a hug and a handshake and just talking about life. I can remember Commissioner Ford, who's no longer here on this Commission. That man is like a granddad just about to me. I loved people in the Republican Party, and I still do. But I can't believe what you guys are doing. I'd call somebody a dadgum liar if they would have told me that y'all were going to, honest to God, drive us to almost $100 million in gross public debt. Now, if nothing else comes out of what I'm trying to do politically, I'm going to make sure that the people of Hamblin County know the truth. If it kills me going door-to-door to over 65,000 residents, they're going to know the truth. They're going to know what you've done, they're going to know what you're doing, they're going to know why they need to elect somebody with a little bit more common sense than what I'm seeing out of y'all. Y'all darn near brought me to tears. That ticks me off. I tend to think I'm a pretty strong guy, but not so much anymore, I guess. And it's sad that it's taken this to, to get me so mad. Y'all really screwed the pooch on this one, as my granddad used to say. I, I can't believe it, but if nothing else, y'all are banking on the Biden economy and y'all are Republicans, and y'all ought to be ashamed. And I know that some of my Democratic buddies are going to say I shouldn't have said that, but they know I'm a conservative and they know I'm a proud Democrat now. May God bless you. Take care.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the Commission on Non- Agenda Items?
My name's Ann Horner. I live at 1535 Panther Creek Road. The clown show just gets better and better every time. Everybody here is not a clown, but I think y'all know who, the people that I'm referring to. And the truth has really come out tonight. So much truth that you all should be ashamed of, not all of you, but the majority of you. And since we were quoting scripture earlier, I would like to quote the words of my Savior from the Book of Luke, Chapter 12. And was Jesus not the Word? He was the Word. He is the Word. And the Bible is a two, is a sword. It divides. Jesus said, "I have come to set the world on fire, and I wish it were already burning. I have a terrible baptism of suffering ahead of me, and I'm under a heavy burden until it is accomplished. Do you think I have come to bring peace to the earth? No, I have come to divide people against each other." And I'll stop right there. But when I stand for the truth, you can pick and choose your scripture to try to make us look bad if you want to. But I've just explained to you what the Word is all about.
Anyone else?
Bonnie Ballington, 317 Folks Doublefield Street, Whitesburg. Yes, I'm back after missing some meetings for medical issues. I know it's brought a little bit of joy to some of you, I'm sure. You know, every time I come in this room, there's always something that goes on that just totally befuddles me. You talk about rules for us. You talk about us respecting you. But we see no two-way street, except from the three or four of you that actually are trying to do some good, sitting up there. The rest of you, you don't care. Today, we heard a Commissioner say, "This is a courtroom." Yes, it's a courtroom, but this is a Commissioner's meeting. It is not a court. You need to realize, Commissioner Goings. And then Commissioner Shipley, you sat up there and you're quick to shout out about taking legal action. Well, we know how much you love to take legal action. But I'm telling you, at some point, you folks are going to have to come down off your thrones and start doing the job that you were put up here to do. But I'm afraid when the election comes up, many of you people are not going to come back to sit up there and play God and put the taxpayers down and treat them like they're nobodies while you do whatever you want to do. Remember that election time, and please, God, let those that have destroyed this county lose by a landslide. And I, I include my Commissioner in that just as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Wayne Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I want to invite y'all to my church next Wednesday night. I really do. I want to invite everyone here to my church next Wednesday night. I go to Faith Community Church next to the Sunderland Cemetery. And we're going to have a teaching in the Bible on the truth.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Tony. I'm going to touch base on a couple of things that has been mentioned, as well as the rules. You all put aside the 10-day rule like it means nothing. Like it means absolutely nothing. This isn't the first time. It happens like every single month. Y'all vote off the rule. So, why can't the citizens vote off the rules? You don't follow the rules that you made for yourself because you think that it's worthless in your own mind. It's something that could just be voted off. My hat means no disrespect to any of you. I chose to wear the hat today because it was sunny and nice out. I'm not going to set it to the side. That's my choice. My choice is to wear my hat today. Bobby Hahn's phone rang. Nobody said a word. That's a rule. They have to be even. If you don't care about the rules and how they're applied to you, even though I'm not here doing this disrespectfully, I shouldn't care about what you all think about what's on my head. And I shouldn't have to worry about legal litigation for what's on my head. That's ridiculous. It's cowardly. Second, I want to bring up the EMS. I have been notified by numerous people about the EMS problem, about them either taking a long time to show up and then hearing that there's only one crew out there. That's a problem, okay? Because if any of you needed that and it didn't show up, or a loved one needed that, you all would be upset. So, before you get upset and other people get upset, let's make something happen with that between the city and the county. That's something that needs to be addressed. Aren't we all about safety of the public? That's what we're here, that's what we live by. Everything is based on the safety. That's something that needs to be concerned and considered. This jail, we keep putting out money and money. He already said he's coming back. At what point do we top it? He said there's no ramifications for this board. They can charge whatever they want. That's what they're telling you. He came up here and he said, hey, basically, you're handing me a blank check. Whatever I come back to you here for, you guys are stuck. You're screwed. You can't back out of it. Now's the time to think and make change on that. Bonds. Tim Horner, I would like to know why you are no longer, or your company is no longer permitted to write bonds in Hamblin County. I know you had a judgment, and I would, I would like to know why AAA bonding has not fulfilled their contract with the county.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate your comments. Does anybody else have any comments they want to share with us at this time? We, you have two announcements under item number nine regarding the April Commission meetings. I've got one announcement to add to that. The Finance Committee will meet Tuesday, April the 5th, at 5:00 PM in the large courtroom to discuss responses to the Real Estate Services RFQ and to make a recommendation to the full Commission. We stand adjourned.